Good evening. Welcome to the January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the City of Coolidge City Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Norma, would you call the rule, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Tom Bagnall?
Present.
Councilmember Audrey Sabetra?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Hudson?
Here.
Mayor John Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Ian Gillespie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tatiana Murietta?
Here.
And Councilmember Tom Shoup?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, we'll move into presentations, and that would be item number three, the monthly report by Coolidge Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm doing, since I wasn't here in December, I'm doing October and November. So our reinvestments for October were Banner Casa Grande Medical Center, Casablanca Apartments, Christ Lutheran Church, Clemens Plumbing, Coolidge Bookkeeping and Tax Professionals, Coolidge Unified School District, Hub Express Arizona, Legacy Rock Products, Next Era Energy Resources, Nicola Corporation, Penale County Federal Credit Union, Penale County Historical Museum, Ryan's Rentals, Spirit of Joy United Methodist Church, Stantac, Sun Corridor, MPO, The Windmill Winery, and Zen Business. And for November was Barnett's Better Buys, Liberty Tax, Desert Providers Medical Supply, EQ, ED2, First Interstate Bank, Garrett Motors, Gillespie Enterprise, Heritage Environmental Services, Imagine Schools in Coolidge, Infinite Power Solar, Kiva Insurance, Nanis Cafe, Coolidge Head Start, Sun Life Health, Tax Cafe, Express Car Wash. And we had some new members, EDP Renewals, North America, Serina Custom Farm Services, and EB Five Investors. Our stats, I did put our stats for October and November together. So for visitors, we had five hundred thirty-seven. In-state was thirteen, out-of-state was ten, three thousand three hundred and eighty-one referrals. Year-to-date for visitors is three thousand two hundred and twelve. Casa Grande Ruins for October and November, they had sixteen thousand. They're up to ninety-six thousand nine hundred and ten for the year through November. Jimmin Mineral Museum had two hundred and seventy-seven, and year-to-date, they're at thirteen ninety-seven. The DAV Museum had ninety, and they're up to three hundred and ninety-six. Some of the things, we're working hard on Cotton Days, as you know, is going on. We had the Mayor's Breakfast, which was well-attended. We had the Market on the Move Saturday. We were able to give out a hundred and eighty boxes, so it's all, everything's going well. Just some events coming up to remind you about. Airport fly-in, February first, CDC meeting on the thirteenth, Career Expo World of Works in Penale County, February thirteenth. That's gonna be a great event for our youth to learn about all the opportunities available. SPD Workshop, February eighteenth, membership luncheon on the nineteenth. Then we'll have Market on the Move the twenty-second, and then, of course, Cotton Days, February twenty-eighth through March second. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Right.
Thank you very much. Okay, now's the time for a call to the public. If there's any members of the public that want to address the council, now's the time. Please come forward to the podium and give us your address, your name. I don't see anybody rushing up. One looked like he almost had to take off, but he landed, so we'll move out of the call to the public and move into business items for consent.
Item four, Tony Garcia.
Okay.
Information's in the packet, but it's not on the agenda. Where is that?
Okay. Any other items?
Yes, I'd like to pull items seven, eight, and nine, please.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see, that leaves five, six, and ten. All right. Item five. Consider approval of a special event license application submitted by Ms. Lynn Parsons for the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce to the Beer Garden on Saturday, March first, two thousand and twenty-five, at their annual Cotton Days Festival being held on February twenty-eighth through March second, two thousand and twenty-five. Approval of street closures and city department requests for services. Item six. Consider approval of entering into an end-users license agreement, an addendum between the City of Coolidge and Granicus at Kara Shaw Soft LLC for continued use of the Granicus products and services as it relates to the IQM2 Automated Agenda Menu Track Program and Boards and Commission Software for the City Clerks Department. Item ten. Consider approval of the claims for the month of December, two thousand and twenty-four. There's no comments. I need a motion to act.
Salute.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. All right. Item four. All we need to do there is add Tony Garcia to reappointment?
Yeah, we're not sure why it didn't transfer from the body of the Minute Track to the agenda, but he would be along with Vicki Williams as far as a reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, that's it, huh? Okay. Reappointment of Vicki Williams and Tony Garcia to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and appointment of Sienna Broksholder and Jaystone Felice to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Vicki Williams and add Tony Garcia to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and appoint Sienna Broksholder and Jaystone Felice to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Another second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, that carries.
Thank you.
Item seven. Consider approval for entering into a professional services agreement between the City of Coolidge and Tishler Bi-Sync for the purpose of performing an updated wastewater and trash rate study, waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, Mr. Navarro, just kind of curious, when was the last time we increased the rates for sewer and trash?
Okay, so trash, I want to say the last time we had a, two thousand and sixteen, when we did a rate study for the trash, and that's when we decided that we were gonna go under contract with Waste Connections, and, well, it was then RAD and farm out our trash service. For sewer, the last time we had a rate study for sewer was two thousand and eight, so it's been quite a while since we've done anything with the sewer rates. So we're really overdue to have it looked at and see where we're at. Kind of poked around on my own. We're lower than everywhere else around us. So I figure we'll get the study done, see where we're going from there. I know we'll need this if we try to do any kind of whiff alone, anything like that, we'll have to have a study done, and so this is part of it.
Okay. And then, the impact fee study that we're currently in process, when do we anticipate that being completed?
Uh, that would be more of a Mr. Garcia question, when the impact fee study's gonna be done.
Should I actually come up with a draft? I think we gotta, I just submit one more revenue after the form, and then we'll put that draft forward. Probably in the next week.
Okay. And then, on this particular item, it says that it'll be ninety days from the project initiation meeting. So when is the project initiation meeting?
It has to get approved first, and then we'll set up a meeting.
Then you said, as soon as possible.
Yeah, then we'll set up a meeting, so a meeting will be set up in the next week or two. We'll set up the initial meeting. I know this company has done the sewer rate study for Casa Grande. I believe they just completed it not too long ago, so they'll have a lot of the information on hand, so it should move fairly quick.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Then I'll go ahead and move to approve item seven of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item eight. Consider approval of entering into agreement with Empire Power Systems for emergency generator maintenance and repairs and waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city. Mr. Navarro?
Do you want to do your introduction, or do you just want me to ask my question?
That's role. I didn't even move.
All right, yeah, I just was kind of curious. The current vendor, it said that we were having some issues, and they've been struggling. Is there, I mean, there's no way that they're gonna be able to make up the time or do, or be able to service us properly on maintaining those generators?
So the current vendor, we have a contract with them till the end of June. We're going to carry out the rest of that contract for the maintenance, so those oil changes, all the, all the filters and everything, we'll continue to have them do that. We've had several repairs on several generators that we've had them come in and do. This diagnosed them several times. We've gone back and forth with them about getting the money back for the fees, for the diagnosis parts, so on and so forth, and we've had to do this multiple times on each generator, to the point to where they were actually breaking parts when they were putting them on. And then now, with a couple of the newer generators that we have, they don't even have the computers to scan the generator because it's proprietary. And so Empire has the, has the tech to scan these, and it's proprietary, only the Empire, so only they can scan them. And so that's why we're looking to move on. We've gone back and forth with them. We've been with them for several years. We were with another company, Rocky Mountain Cummings, before them. We had some of the same issues. We actually had Empire come out and fix a generator that our current vendor has tried to repair four times, and it just turned out that the pump was timed wrong, and they were unable to scan it because they don't have the proper equipment to do it.
And with the current vendor, so do we pay them upfront for the full year, or do we pay them quarterly?
Yes, they're paid upfront. So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and finish out the contract for the maintenance. Any of the repairs, though, we're not gonna, we're not gonna use them. The repairs are outside of the contract. We just have contract pricing.
Well, I think it's good that you've tried to work with the current vendor, but since they're not producing, I think it's probably a good idea to move on, and Empire is very reputable, and so I don't think we're gonna have any of them.
Yeah, so Empire, Empire is a little bit of an additional cost, but we're actually paying more with the current vendor because we've had to have them come back multiple times to do repairs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve item eight of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Item seven. Item nine. Consider approval of accepting the right-of-way dedication pursuant to the dedication agreement and special warranty deed of dedication of right-of-way for Orsted Onshore Real Estate LLC as required by the adopted conditional use permit, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents, subject to straightening out the legal descriptions on Exhibit A of the dedication agreement. James?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, happy to answer your questions.
Okay, that was, that was one of the questions, was the legal description, because there's no legal description on the document. And just want to be sure, now, the dedications that it has here, is that of all the right-of-way or in addition to the existing right-of-way? Because that's where we ran into the same problem when we were dealing with Stories Solar, because the legal description came up, and the guy was going outside of the thirty-three feet and then taking the right-of-way, and so I just wanted to be clarification that we are gonna include the existing with what they're being dedicated here. And I also have a question regarding the hundred-foot right-of-way on each side of Lev Mile Corner Road. That seemed a little bit excessive, and especially since we're gonna be taking in on one side of it, they have those power lines running up and down and everything. Why do we want to take that on when we're not gonna be able to use that for anything?
It's, Mayor Thompson, Councilmember Bagnall, it's based on the general plan that was adopted by the voters, so it's probably a major arterial, I would think. I'd have to pull it and see. That's why the, it was asked for that way when we created this conditional use permit, anticipating it's gonna be a larger roadway in the future.
Future.
Because the way it is.
Okay, because, you know, I mean, just going out and looking at Lev Mile Corner Road and with the Tierra Grande subdivision and everything in there, I mean, if we're gonna take a hundred feet on either side, I don't think we're gonna be using it all because you're gonna be taking out houses and part of the fairgrounds and into the substation that SRP has out there and everything else.
Yeah, and this doesn't, this is to the north of two eighty-seven, so I don't know if it, when it gets to two eighty-seven, it'll come back down.
Yeah.
It does include some of the things in front of the, the Orsted property where that building is, but this doesn't cover anything south because, you're right, it's got the canal and it's
Right.
a certain width. But, yeah, so this is, this is following the general plan and what we require them to dedicate to us on their side, so.
Yeah, because I, I didn't know exactly where this was, that this was coming off of it, because we didn't have a map or legal description
Yeah, I apologize for that.
on this document. So I'd, I'd really like to see that before we go approve this. And the other thing, I, you know, you and I had discussed this the other day
Yeah.
regarding Sunshine Boulevard
Yes.
and the right-of-way for it. The current right-of-way and with the construction that went on out there, if you go north from two eighty-seven up Sunshine to where you turn in to the project, the road's pretty torn up, and the city guys came out, did a good job on getting it all repaired and everything else. But I think that was because of the excessive use, and they were running semis up and down the road, fully loaded and empty, and they were running water trucks, and they were actually putting water on the chip-sealed road, which I didn't understand what they were doing with that, but that helped, that helped with the deterioration of it, so I don't know why we should be bearing the cost of that and the, so the developers should be bearing the cost of that and pay us back for it.
Mayor Thompson, Councilmember Bagnall, I talked to Ben about the cost, and we're looking at about five hundred dollars, and I called Orsted, I called Orsted itself, not the people out here, locals, and I asked them to, left a message to, we'd like to be paid for that, so we'll see if we can get that taken care of.
But I, I just think, you know, I mean, they did, they did quite a bit of damage to that road, and we're just gonna see it continually, because the chip seal was not done very well by the county when they put it down to start with, but, you know, but we're just gonna continue to see that. And then also on Tweedy and Curry, both those roads, now those, are they, they've been paved or chip sealed, and who did that?
Chip sealed, and they did that, right, Ben? I think, yeah, those roads, yeah.
Because I drove those roads, and it doesn't look like they tried to blade them out and, or anything before they did that, they just kind of went in there, because you drive down those roads, I mean, you know, it's bumpy, and, you know, again, we're taking on something that our public works is gonna have to go out there and work on those, because I just don't, I just can't see those roads lasting that long the way they seem to be constructed.
Okay, so with the CUP agreement that was done for those roads for Tweedy and Curry, the way the language was laid out is that it was just to be chip sealed. We had to argue to get it double-chip sealed on there, and we actually should have required them to do six-inch AB base under it, along with a minimum of a chip seal. And so this is, this is something that I've been working with, with James and Development Services and Gilbert for a while now, is getting a set of standards in place, and so we have an infrastructure book. Whenever anybody comes in, these are minimum standards that we want for roadways, for plans, lights, any kind of building, we have a set of minimum standards that we have out and that's put out, and these are the bare minimums. All roads should be actually built by geotech that come out, and they have to do the geotech and the geotech bases, based off of that is how you build your roadways. But it's also built off of the general plan, which was put out, and that gives us our width, how you were talking about the hundred-foot right-of-way on Lev Mile Corner, and that's all for future build-out, and that's why we want the hundred-foot right-of-way off of Lev Mile Corner, because while it's not that big now, who knows what it looks like twenty years down the road to where we have an issue like we do out on Shed Road, when we're gonna have to acquire a right-of-way on Shed and the eighty-seven. So we're gonna have to acquire a little right-of-way to get that road to work, to get the turn lanes in and everything. Part of the general plan is that, so we can set this up when the development comes in. We have these right-of-ways in place while maybe nothing happens with it, we take care of that right-of-way for now, but down the line, when these roads are widened out and they're built out to ultimate build-out, we have those right-of-ways in place for utilities and everything else that go in there, and that's why we want the whiffs on it. Just talking about Tweedy and Curry, though, we were, we went a lot of back and forth with the contractor through the developer for these roads, getting them to grade them out, doing the best we can, because we can only make them do what's in the agreement that was written up eight, ten years ago, so that chip seal's on native soil. So when you do a chip seal on native soil, it's not the best, as you've driven it. We're on them already, I believe, on Curry, because it's starting to pop up on there. We have a, to go back and have them do repairs. Mark Garcia's already on those guys about going out there and doing the repairs in the area that are on it, but that's just some of the stuff we're fighting with and these old agreements that were made, and so we're having to do the best we can with what we got.
Right. Well, I, I can appreciate us going ahead now and, you know, making sure that we have standards in place for these, because, like I said, you know, just looking at that and driving it today, I drove it twice today, just to, and I'm telling you, it's, it's just gonna be a future headache for us, and it's gonna be a liability for us, because, and, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do some major work on it, and, you know, that's gonna take away from, you know, doing work on Coolidge proper with a lot of our streets and stuff, so.
Yeah, I agree.
But I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's being addressed, though, so thank you, I appreciate And if there's nothing else, anybody else have any questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number nine.
Mr., or, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bagnall, with the stipulation that the city approves the legal descriptions once we have them.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion to approve item nine with the stipulation that the city approve the legal description prior to accepting the right-of-way.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Post. All right. There's no business regular items. We'll have a report from the Mayor and the Council. Start down here with Councilmember Bagnall.
Okay, first, I want to go ahead and just recognize a couple people, or several people, Dan and Tracy Solger and Renegarling. We were out doing our adopt a highway for the Lions Club north of town, and they were also with a group that they organized to try to clean up some of the stuff that goes along the overpass back towards the railroad. So we kind of finished ours up, the Lions Club did, and then we went ahead and we worked with them a little bit and everything else, and then this last weekend, they also got their group together, and they were painting over some graffiti and everything down, I think on First Street near Coolidge Avenue. So would like to recognize them and thank them and their group for the effort they put in, and like to remind everybody, this Thursday night, spaghetti dinner at the American Legion. We have the fly-in out at the airport on Saturday, and if I can read my handwriting here, oh, the American Legion is also having a Super Bowl party on Super Bowl Sunday, which is a pretty good time to have it, and they're gonna have, to start out, there's gonna be a cornhole tournament, pool tournament, and then they're gonna have raffles and everything, so, and I think they're gonna have specials throughout the game, so if anybody's down there, they're gonna have food. Anybody in the area want to stop in, look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Yeah, I attended the breakfast with the mayor and also the police banquet, both well-attended, and kind of interesting what EQ is doing out there and the planes and everything they're bringing out there. They're just growing and growing, so very interesting information we got from that, so, thank you.
I also attended the police awards dinner, just wanted to thank Grizzle and the Police Department for having us out there.
Oh, you don't?
Well, I think we all attended the police banquet.
Yeah, so it was a good time. It was a good time. Also was gonna bring up, and I was cleared up prior to tonight's meeting about a concern I had with the Nicola Project out south of town and everything, and they're just some scary stuff to me because I haven't been involved with any of these discussions, and their, their, well, their value has dropped significantly, but, but there may be some solutions to that, so let's just hope that there are, because that's a big item for Coolidge, no doubt. Okay.
That's all.
Vice Mayor.
I, too, was able to attend the breakfast with the mayor, and I thought that was really interesting. EQ gave a twenty-twenty-four closeout, lots of information and growth, and I was able to attend the monthly chamber where CAC also reported out for twenty-twenty-four, and man, have they grown, and they have a whole lot of stuff going on out there. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Tom Scott and the members of Coolidge, along with a whole bunch of youth from Coolidge that he rounded up to go and clean up Randolph last Saturday, as they prepare for this Saturday's one-hundredth celebration, one-hundred years of Randolph, so in case you guys don't have on, between ten AM and four PM, they have a whole bunch of speakers lined up, so hopefully you guys can get out there and celebrate with them. I unfortunately work on Saturdays, so I won't make it. And then I also wanted to, well, ask first, does anybody know how long this survey is going on for the Coolidge Short Range Transit Plan for the Cotton Express and the cart? Do you know when the survey closes?
No, I have a cup.
I want to say closes in about a week. I can send you the date of when it closes, but it's coming up real quick.
Okay. The flyer doesn't have a close date, but I know, I checked it yesterday on today, and it's still live, so just wanted to remind everybody, if you haven't taken the survey, to give your opinion on that and give your thoughts. That's it for me.
Come on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I have been attending, of course, the Intergov meetings for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, where we're looking at all bills that are being floated out there that can hurt us financially and some others. I do the Intergov meeting on Fridays and attend some legislative updates. So related to that, of course, is, you'll see in the proposed budget, information that our Finance Director, CFO, Gabe Garcia, passed out with information, and Scott, on page three, just some, some data on potential revenue challenges we face. The one thing, the first three, the first two bullet points are ones that are taking place, they're already in the law, so they're gonna take effect. The elimination of the food tax, potential, and the incorporation of Antan Valley, those have to still be pushed through the legislature to get on the ballot on the food tax, and the other one, the incorporation of Antan Valley, has to go through a vote, so they have to get the right signatures and then put it on the ballot and then see if it passes. So those two are not in law right now, so just, you know, so the league's doing everything we can and to try to, you know, stop that or cut it off, and some, food tax is pretty minimal for us, but I know some of the, as far as what we charge, but some of the real small communities, just, you know, like Taylor, they lose like forty percent of their budget, so you can imagine it, and it impacts us quite a bit, you'll see in these numbers, pretty important. And so we're really concentrating on that, and we'll give you updates on what's going on, but there's a lot of bills right now, there's probably close to nine hundred or more, and usually there's sixteen hundred by the end of the year when that, everybody looks at. We usually concentrate on two to three hundred that affect cities and towns, and there's some good bills in there, too, so that's not all bad, those are really good. So we're in contact with our representatives and doing, and looking at all these items. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Survey closes February seventh.
Oh, survey closes on February seventh. That's a great question. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Mr. Lopez a question. How many times has Santan Incorporation come to a vote in the past?
I think this is the third time, right?
They've never voted on it.
Well, they never voted on it, but it's been turned down each time.
Never made it.
Yeah, I know, but the efforts, I thought it was this, it's the third one. I'm not sure.
In the past, I think you were on the council when the bill fell within the limits, and we voted no.
Right.
And the next time they tried it, Florence voted no. So they resurveyed everything, and they cut their limits. And now, I, I mean, they can't have the, uh, other communities vote to, to cancel it. So the only thing holding them back is themselves and the legislature, the, the rules. So it looks like they may, they may have the vote this time. So, and all of it put together, if it all goes, I think we figured it up, is four million dollars to us, to Coolidge. So it's gonna be, because it's, there's two one-point-twos and two hundred eight thousand, eight hundred thousand. So if everything goes the way they think it goes, and that doesn't count, the interest will lose. So on the money that's already accruing interest that we'll have to spend. So that's what we look at. We don't know. We're going, Gilbert and I are going to a legislative thing on, uh, Friday.
Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, it is.
Yeah, skip out, yeah.
That's right. So, yeah, we're going to that. So we'll see how it goes down there. Gonna meet with a bunch of the legislators and senators and other, other mayors. So we'll see how it works out. But, yeah, it doesn't look good, but it never does at this time every year. It's the same thing. They just have different people present the, the same bills, um, and they try to push them through. Very few of them favor the city. So, anyway, that's all I've got. I need a motion to get out of here. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, thank you, everybody. Word adjourned.